Good evening, Portland, and welcome, everyone, to the sixth of nine public hearings hosted by the Independent District Commission, seeking your input on the draft district plan. My name is Josh Lorente. He/him, I have the privilege of serving as co-chair for this last phase of the commission’s work alongside fellow Commissioner and co-chair Dwayne Judd. Before I hand things off to our moderator to get things started, I just want to thank everyone for taking the time to be here this evening. This is a truly historic moment for our communities to improve representation at City Hall, and this districting process does not happen without you. So, thank you all for being here, and there are snacks and light refreshments here at the table, so please take what you need during the meeting to be comfortable, and I will hand things over to Jamie to get us started.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Can everyone hear me? Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamie, and I’m your moderator tonight. It’s good to see so many faces. Before I provide more details about what you can expect tonight, I want to make sure everyone has the ability to fully participate. So, there’s some things I need to tell you. First, this meeting is being recorded and will be available online after the hearing, so if you miss anything while we’re talking, if you would like to share this very informative educational presentation with your friends and family, it will be available at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission. We have, I’m gonna sit back a little, we have American Sign Language and Spanish Interpretation available today. If you would like to access either of those resources, you can go to the front table where you came in, and they can help connect you. Also, if you came here to give testimony and you haven’t done so already, please go to that same sign-in table to get signed in and put on the cue so that we can call you in order when it’s time. If you do not want to give testimony today, that’s okay, although we’d love to hear from you. There are other ways that you can provide input, so I’m gonna walk through a few of those ways. You can submit public comment by emailing at districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov. You can call 311 if you’d like to give verbal testimony over the phone, and they can receive testimony in multiple languages. You can fill out written testimony through a public comment form that’s available on that table where all the materials are. You can also fill out an online survey that’s at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission. And finally, you can do the good old-fashioned mailing a letter to the city of Portland. You can mail it to the Office of Management and Finance, care of the Independent District Commission, at 1120 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Portland, 97204. And any way that you choose to participate or provide public comment, just know that public comment is open until Saturday, July 22nd, so please get your comments in before then. Okay, so I’m gonna wrap up this intro by quickly going over the agenda before handing it over to the commissioners. For our time together this evening, the Independent District Commissioners will start with an educational presentation to give you an overview of their proposal. It’s about 30 minutes. And tonight, we also have four invited guests who I will call up to give their testimony first, and after that, we will open it up for public testimony. And after all the testimony is over, we’ll conclude our evening with some closing remarks from the commissioners before letting you go to enjoy the rest of your evening. Okay, so I’m now gonna pass it over to our commissioners Lorente and Judd for the educational presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to, as Commissioner Lorente said, our sixth community engagement. We appreciate your attendance this evening and look forward to hearing your feedback. As we just talked about, we’re gonna do a brief presentation, but again, and all the other commissioners here, we really do appreciate your feedback and your support throughout this very inaugural and challenging process that we’re going through here. So, thank you very much again. Currently, there are five city councilors elected by voters across the entire city, but in November 2022, the voters adopted revisions to the city charters requiring four voting districts. Starting with the November 2024 election, each district will elect three councilors, thus increasing city council from five at-large members to 12 districts representatives. Voter-approved city charter amendments task the development of an independent district commission to prepare and adopt voting districts. Primarily, this work involves engaging with the community and consulting with experts to design voting districts. This summer’s approved voting districts will remain in place until the next city’s charter review in 2030. On the independent commission, there are 13 voting members as well as alternates. All of us participated in the citywide application process. We were vetted by city staff, appointed by the mayor, and confirmed by city council in January 2023. Per the title, the Independent District Commission is an independent community body authorized to create district voting plans on behalf of and accountable to Portland communities. A supermajority vote of nine out of 13 commissioners is required to approve the final voting district plan. If after two votes, the district commission is unable to reach a supermajority, plans will be referred to city council for its consideration and adoption. From February to March, district commission foundational work was completed, and a criteria was reviewed during public hearings. There was a provision allowing the district commission to adopt additional criteria, but following two months of public feedback and a public hearing in April, the district commission decided not to add any additional criteria. At the end of June, draft district plans were made available to the community for review and commentary. During July, we are required to hold eight public hearings, two in each of the proposed districts, but before we vote on a district plan. Yet, in fact, we will hold a ninth public hearing via Zoom this Friday at noon to solicit as much feedback as possible. Per voter requirements, we cannot vote on a final district plan before August 15th or 30 days after the last public hearing on July 16th. While we have received public comments to extend the timeline, per voter requirements, the district commission must adopt a plan by no later than September 1st of this year. Beyond being guided by voter-approved requirements, the district commission is also guided by federal and state laws, including the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment as well as the 1965 Voting Rights Act. Under the Fourteenth Amendment, there is a notion of one person, one vote, which requires that voting districts must be of substantially equal population. Under the Voting Rights Act of 1965, districts’ creation cannot discriminate on the basis of race, color, or membership in a protected language minority group. Additionally, it prohibits districting from the purpose of and result in racial discrimination. Because populations shift over time, district boundaries must be redrawn in accordance with the U.S. Decennial Census Data taken every 10 years. While we’ve received community requests to consider future population shifts, we are legally bound to stick to the 2020 census data and allow 2030 data to inform any future Portland’s voter-approved district requirements are rooted in federal court precedent as much as practical. Districts must, one, be contiguous and compact; two, utilize existing geographic and/or political boundaries; three, be connected by transportation links; four, be of equal population; five, not be drawn to favor a political party, incumbent elected official, or either entity, or dilute the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. And then, lastly, they must not divide communities’ common interests. Communities of common interest have been defined by national precedent as groups sharing policy concern and benefiting from alignment. Separating communities of common interest have shown to result in decreased ability to advocate and affectuate community priorities. Please recall that the district commission decided not to amend any of these requirements. In determining draft district boundaries, the district commission used various data sets to satisfy stated requirements. Examples of the data sets are presented on screen. Use of specific data sets fulfilled certain requirements. For example, the Fourteenth Amendment and Voting Rights Act required the use of the 2020 Decennial Census as well as American Community Annual Survey data, which provided additional demographic and socioeconomic data. Additionally, some data sets were used to define multiple requirements. For example, school district boundaries could be used as proxies for political boundaries as well as boundaries of common interest, as they reflect an aggregation of shared concerns. The district commission relied upon consultants to support defining, aggregating, and analyzing the data. These subject matter experts provided us with guidance in overlaying socioeconomic, voter age, public transportation, homeownership, renter, and public service data. But defining communities of common interest requires community input, community feedback, and community validation. This is the crux of our work. It is listening to you and engaging with you on these common concerns to define neighborhood communities and their relative partners. How far out do these common interests and these concerns radiate? That’s why we’re here, listening to you. Portlanders have engaged with the district commission in a variety of ways to inform the creation of draft maps. You are the author of these maps. We are attempting to draw them based on your input. On the screen, you see engagement numbers as of May 30th. Throughout June and now into July, we’ve had additional public comments with over 200 draft maps submitted by community members. Commissioners have attended community-led districting events, held individual meetings with community leaders, and spent many hours reflecting on your contributions. Throughout the process, the district commission has centered on voices that have been historically disenfranchised in city decision-making. Commissioner Lorente will now walk you through the results of those efforts via an overview of the draft maps.
Thank you, co-chair Judd, for grounding us in that very informative recap, and now I would like us to pivot to the draft district plan and discussion of the maps themselves. So, on June 1st, the district commission released three maps outlining possible boundaries for these new districts for community consideration. Each of these maps, named Alder, Cedar, and Maple, adhere to the district criteria that voters approved last November and are directly informed by the community input that we’ve received to date. And I want to note here as well that the names assigned to each of these maps are just labels to help facilitate discussion and to distinguish between them. So, I’m gonna start off by describing what these three maps share in common. I’ll identify the areas of difference between them, and then we’ll look at each of the maps individually to get a little deeper into the underlying rationale and the different trade-offs and considerations that were made to inform the differences between these maps. So, starting first with the common themes and map characteristics, you will notice that all three of these maps uplift representation in East Portland by connecting communities east of I-205 in a single district. And this green East Portland district also connects the four non-Portland public school districts together in a single district, so that’s Park Rose, David Douglas, Reynolds, and Centennial. All three maps use the same combination of 82nd Avenue and I-205 to preserve the interests of the Jade District as well as the Lentz Neighborhood. Next, looking at the North Portland District in yellow, you’ll notice that all the neighborhoods of North Portland are connected in a single district with the exception of those included in the Park Rose School District. Additionally, both sides, both the north and south sides of Columbia Boulevard are connected in this North Portland District. Also, the area of historic Albina is preserved in this North Portland District out of consideration for the history of displacement to our Black communities as well as the work being done to currently restore the Albina area. Lastly, each of these maps connects communities on the west side of the Willamette in a single district, and that will segue us to the two key areas of difference you’ll notice across these maps. First, the first key difference between these maps answers the question, what eastside communities have the strongest rationale for connecting with the westside district? Per the 2020 census, which we are using for population data, the west side of the city is about 20,000 Portlanders short of meeting that equal population criteria. So, the Alder map crosses the river in lower southeast, the Cedar map crosses along the inner east side, and the Maple map crosses in the central east side from about I-84 to Powell. The second key difference between these maps is how to define the boundary between that north district in yellow and the teal district representing the southeast and central part of the city. So, the Alder map here uses neighborhood association boundaries, the Cedar map uses Sandy Boulevard as a transit corridor, and the Maple map uses a combination of both neighborhood association boundaries as well as Sandy Boulevard to define that border. So, now let’s look at each of these maps individually, beginning first with the Alder map. So, the Alder map is designed around prioritizing neighborhood association boundaries. On the Alder map, the west district includes the eastside communities of Selwood, East Moreland, West Moreland, and Reed due to demographic and socioeconomic similarities between those communities. Alder map also uses neighborhood association boundaries along Sandy Boulevard to define that bottom boundary of that North Portland District. The Alder map also divides the central city among three districts using the Willamette River and I-84’s boundaries in order to promote engagement with central city issues and economic opportunities, as well as to distribute significant assets and institutions across multiple districts. Looking now at the Cedar map, the Cedar map is designed to prioritize transit corridors. This map uses Sandy Boulevard, 12th Avenue, 82nd, as well as our MAX lines because Portlanders intuitively know these corridors, and also to prioritize the role of accessible public transit in bringing communities together. On the Cedar map, the westside district includes the central eastside Industrial Council District as well as the Brooklyn and Selwood neighborhoods. These are included with the west district because they share eight bridge connections across the Willamette and maintain bus and MAX connections to the east. And this does put the eastside neighborhoods of Kearns, Buckman, and Hosford Abernathy in two districts. The Cedar map uses Sandy Boulevard to define the north district’s bottom border from about 37th to 82nd, and again, this does put Hollywood, Rose City Park, and Roseway in two districts. Lastly, looking at the Maple map, the Maple map is designed to prioritize keeping the central city together and is guided by the 2035 comprehensive plan. On the Maple map, the central city includes the most densely populated and urbanized neighborhoods where residential and commercial uses are tightly interwoven. The Maple map includes the neighborhoods of Kearns, Buckman, and part of the Hosford Abernathy neighborhood with the west district, one to keep the central city together and also to connect the renter-heavy neighborhoods on the east side with the renter-heavy neighborhoods on the west side. And the Maple map uses a combination of both Sandy Boulevard as well as those surrounding neighborhoods to define that boundary, that bottom boundary of North Portland. So, the Independent District Commission is committed to ensuring that the final district plan is reflective of the priorities of Portlanders from all backgrounds, with a specific focus on creating an equitable and inclusive process. Now that three maps have been released for public input, the commission is committed to engaging even more Portlanders to hear additional feedback, opinions, questions, concerns, and ideas. The community feedback we receive will be integral to informing the final district plan in August. This is a collective opportunity for all of us to fundamentally reshape our city government for the better, and the gravity of this task cannot be overstated. Not only will these districts make up the city council for the November 2024 elections, the final map will also be in place until after the 2030 census. It is our hope that these three maps will prompt reactions and reflections about how Portlanders most want to be represented in City Hall going forward. We understand that some of what has been presented today might be unfamiliar, it might be technical to some, and our hope is that this presentation gave you a better understanding of our work to date. Before we begin testimony, I want to share that there are many ways that Portlanders can share feedback or get their questions answered by the commission. Public comment is being accepted through Saturday, July 22nd, and there are several ways that Portlanders can share comments with the commission. We have an online comment form, you can send an email to districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov, you can call 311, and we do accept feedback in any language, and you can also snail-mail a letter to the Office of Management and Finance. And with that, I will hand it over to our moderator to begin testimony.
Well done, commissioners. Thank you so much. Before we open it up to public testimony, I am going to start by inviting or calling up our invited guests, and we are going to begin with Marcus Mundy, Executive Director of the Coalition of Communities of Color.
Thank you, thank you for inviting me today and letting me say a couple of words. I was just gonna make it up and speak extemporaneously, but I’ll be quick, but I’ll say a couple of things that I was just jotting down as I was listening to the reason for all of this. So, I was supposed to answer the question, why should the Black community engage with this charter, with this end the districting process, and maybe not answer it, but at least reflect on it, opine about it, and share some thoughts. And I’ll start with just saying, like, Dick Bogle, Charles Jordan, Joanne Hardisty, Mingus Maps, and then I’ll add in Carmen Rubio and Rene Gonzalez. Now, the first four were the four Black members of the city council, the only four that Portland has ever had, and the last two were people of color, Carmen Rubio and Rene Gonzalez. I’ve met all six. I know, I knew all six, some, a couple have passed away, but I’ve known them, I’ve met them, I’ve sat down with them, I’ve heard their thoughts, and that’s both wonderful and also a shame. I’ve only been here 20 years. I should know every councilperson of color that has sat on the Portland City Council in over 100 years. So, just that fact alone makes me want to urge my fellow Black residents of Portland to get engaged with this process. There’s a reason that we only had four Black commissioners over all that time, and the reason is, one was, and I noticed it on the districting thing, the charge of this commission, you all said it is not to dilute certain populations or whatever. The city, the charter as it exists, was set up to dilute those very votes. It was meant to dilute different factions of people, not always people of color, but it was meant to dilute certain parts of Portland and keep the same people getting elected over time. So, I applaud the commission for what they’ve done and how they’ve constructed this. Oh, see, my stuff went out, sorry. But one of the reasons why I think it’s so important that you hear this testimony from these communities and that you’ve constructed this is that I like the district process, I’m engaged in the process. In fact, our group, the Coalition of Communities of Color, was one of the champions of this, and we believe that by doing this, we will have more candidates of color, not guaranteed to win, but with the opportunity to win, with a better chance to win, and working in smaller districts where their numbers aren’t diluted. I looked at this, the numbers that you all had, and the biggest percentage of Black folks in any one of the districts, I thought, was around 9%, and mostly it’s 7% or 8% or 6% or 3% in one district. These are small percentages, so as much as I’m up here, well, kinda jumping up and down about Black folks, I’m also saying that we have to have people of color, we have to have allies, we have to have the ability to build something that’s in our name, coalitions that are for the common good and shared interest. So, I’ll wrap it up, because I know you have other folks, but this charter process gives me the opportunity and the hope that we can do that, that we can come together and have some shared interests and not have the, round up the usual suspects of powerful people or businesses or determine how this city’s gonna run. I want the people to determine how it’s gonna run. So, that’s it. The last thing I’ll say is, I just urge every resident, whoever they are, to engage, but I especially urge and challenge Black folks and people of color to step up in this process, to vote, to run for office, but whatever you do, just engage, for goodness sake. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mundy. We really appreciate you coming here tonight. Our next invited guest is Kim McCarty, Executive Director of the Community Alliance of Tenants.
Good afternoon. I’m really happy to be here. I really want to thank our hosts, SEI, for this opportunity for everyone to gather. I’m Kim McCarty, the Executive Director for the Community Alliance of Tenants. We represent tenants throughout the state of Oregon, but we have our history here in Portland, and our mission is to especially serve low-income tenants and our communities of color throughout the state. And I’m here to say regarding these districts, it’s really important, the work that you’re doing, to set boundaries, make these lines, find our common interests. There are many common interests amongst tenants, and what we know is that tenants are not represented on our city council. They’re not represented in areas of leadership. You know, the one person I can think of is Joanne Hardisty. We’re also not well-represented. I want to speak specifically to the Black community, as Marcus just did. And so, when we’re doing this process, what was the real goal? The goal is to have that representation, to have those common interests, to have some power behind it, and the districts are one way of doing that, and we also want tenants to have more say, and what we know about tenants is that in Portland, most of our Black tenants cannot afford to live in the central city. We know in the last couple of years that Black tenants represent 70% of those who are renting, and we also know that when rent assistance was so critical, most of that rent assistance was being distributed in the central corridor along I-205. We know that of the individuals in Portland that were trying to access the Portland Defenders, the Portland Defense Project to prevent evictions, that almost 40% of those individuals were from Black households. So, I just point that out to illustrate the disparities that Black households face in Portland, that they specifically face as tenants, and how critical it is that they have a voice in the decisions that are being made. Decisions like these boundaries, decisions about transportation, decisions about the quality of housing that’s being built, decisions about how affordable that housing will be, and can our households afford that housing? Can we still even live in Portland? Because we know over the last 10 years, the pressures on Black households has led to, in a very short period of time, widespread displacement, almost to the point of displacing the entire, a huge amount of the Black community to other parts of the state. So, those are just some of my comments. I also just wanted to say that it’s, there’s a lot of dissimilarity in terms of what renters experience. We know that the quality of housing and the amount of rental housing in East Portland is different than Central East Portland or from the west side. While there is natural affordable housing in parts of the west side, especially along the Barber Boulevard corridor, on the whole, it’s far more expensive, and you can see that, as an example, rent assistance was far less distributed in those areas. There are, of course, pockets of affordable housing in the central district of downtown on the west side and equally so on the east side, but the amount of naturally affordable housing, what I mean is not subsidized housing, is predominantly on the east side of Portland. So, I urge you all to take this information and overlay it on the decisions that you’re making about districts and about boundaries, and do so with the intent of making sure that individuals and households with common interests really are elevated in the end and that they’re gonna have the ability to have their interests heard on this council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for sharing your expertise with us tonight. Our next invited guest is Stephen Green, Executive Director of Business for a Better Portland.
Thank you. One, thank you for having us here today. Stephen Green, a Portland native, grew up here, lived in Woodlawn for the last 20 years, worked for the city of Portland for 10-plus years, got to work with and making people like Kim, and today I want to speak to you a little bit. My degree’s in economics, and my minor was in demography, so like census data, like, ooh, census blocks, ACS, ooh, don’t get me started. But, you know, specifically, you know, we have the largest Black and Latinx population that Portland’s ever had as of today. They’re not all required to live in 97211 and 212, but it’s a very young population, right? So, the average age in the Black community is 31, in the Latinx community it’s 27, in the white community it’s 37. So, when I go through the website, looking at GIS of the maps that you all are making, I notice there’s something that says voting age. I assume that means 18 or over? Is that correct? I see some head nods. 18 and over? We all know when we look into voting data, the people that vote generally aren’t 18 years old, they’re generally not 28 years old, they’re generally not 38 years old, they’re older than that. So, one of the things I So, one of the things I would love to learn more about from the committee is, how are you taking the information on the high-level macro, on the census data around communities of color, and then how are you weaving in the realities of who votes, disenfranchisement, some of the information that Kim was talking about around renters and the amount of renters that are voting, and what percentage that is versus homeowners? And then, more about the process. I think you all have been really great about engaging with community, but when I saw those numbers, is that correct, only 200, less than 200 people have engaged in the meetings? Is that what I read correctly up on that? 200 draft maps, gotcha. Feels a lot better. We got over 600,000 people, so I feel a lot better about that. So, one, again, thank you. I'm excited to do a meeting next week with Commissioner Fleishman, where he's going to be able to talk about what these maps mean for businesses and be able to expand on that. But I'd love to know more about how the committees engage with communities of color. Commissioner Lumley's been really, really open about talking with communities of color. I'd love to know what that looks like. You've extended a couple times, working with the black community and speaking on our behalf. I'd love to know what that looked like and how you can maybe apply that to some of the other areas. I think, you know, what's it look like to work with folks in Selwood? What's it look like to work with folks in Central East Side? What are some of those learnings? And, you know, how to, you know, it gives me pause when I hear someone speak for us, right? Well, I'd love to hear more about that, so people can go from feeling pause and going, oh, wow, okay, that's great to hear. We've got someone who's really, really leaning into our community and advocating for us. So, I appreciate you taking the time. I'm looking forward to the time that I'm going to get next week with Commissioner Fleishman and Commissioner Judd, and learning more from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our final invited guest is community organizer Camille Trummer.
I'm a little short, so I'm going to pull this down. Good evening, everyone. My name is Camille Trummer. I use pronouns like she and her. I'm a social impact consultant and fourth-generation Portlander. Thank you so much for holding this community meeting. It's really important that we collect community input and insights to inform something as significant as changing the way that our city government will function, and exploring ways that that will establish modes of power. So, one of the things that I had questions about or gave me slight pause was outreach and engagement. I'm an outreach engagement specialist. I do it for the city of Portland and many other entities and nonprofit organizations. And when I think about inclusive engagement, right, what are the methodologies that you've used to ensure that voices who experience barriers to participating in civic projects like this have an opportunity to be here tonight, to be at previous hearings and to be a part of future engagement? It's really important to acknowledge that there are folks across the city that have access, resources, and time, and there are many folks, many Portlanders, that do not. And so, we have an opportune moment, as we think about changing our city government, to actually have it reflect the city of Portland based on input from voices we usually do not hear from. So, I'd love to just leave you with this question of, how are you going to continue to outreach and engage communities, particularly our most vulnerable communities, so that they have an opportunity to have their voice heard and centered as you think about the ways in which community input will inform the draft maps? The other thing that I want to talk about is just, I fundamentally believe, especially as somebody who was born and raised here, that we should be rethinking and reimagining our city government, right? So that we can increase access and opportunity and invite ways to create shared prosperity for folks that want to represent and work in deep collaboration with communities to create inclusive and equitable and just policy. But that goes hand in hand with outreach and engagement. And so, if we don't do outreach and engagement well and right in an inclusive way, in an accessible way, we don't have the opportunity to invite folks to cultivate candidates that then could be the next generation of our city government leaders. And so, one of the things that I observed when looking at these maps is, how are we, as a collective, as a community, going to begin to mitigate the creation of boundaries and maps that may inadvertently create concentration of power? When I think about the West Side, and I think about the stark differences between the West Side and the East Side, me having been born and raised in North and Northeast Portland, went to Benson High School, we all can, like, recall the deep disparities across these two different places in one city, east and west, right? And so, I want us to think, I want us as a community, not just commissioners here, us as a community, to think about, how do we mitigate the creation of power by inadvertently creating maps that centralize folks that have far more access and privilege than others? And yes, there is intersectionality when you think about access to transit and housing and public health resources, but if we don't think about this very closely and examine these boundaries that we're establishing very closely, we will inadvertently create spaces and places and maps that will reinforce the power that has created deep disparities that my community in particular still experiences to this day. Has not changed, it's gotten worse. So, I leave us, collective us, with this question. How are we going to think about this critically and perhaps reverse-engineer the way that we create boundaries and maps so that we actually are creating shared prosperity and equal access to opportunity, and not regenerating the same centralization of power that has led to the inequitable policies, when we think about land use policy? That is burdening and has caused historical harm that is still experienced today. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your expertise with us tonight. I just want to thank, again, our invited guests. They've given the commission a lot to think about, and now we are going to move into public Before we start, I do have a few things to go over with you, so you know what you're getting into. First, if you have not signed up, it is not too late. I encourage you to please walk yourself over to the table and put yourself in the queue. We want to hear from as many of you tonight as possible. Also, as you are giving testimony, we will be keeping track of questions that you're asked, that you have asked during the testimony. We've already received a few. And if we have time after everyone has had a chance to testify, the commissioners may be able to answer some of them, so we'll see how it goes. To ensure that this is a welcoming space, whether you are testifying or not, we would appreciate if everyone here would agree to follow some rules of conduct. And that includes disruptive conduct, such as interrupting someone, or shouting out from your seats, or not concluding your testimony during the allocated time, or using foul language will not be allowed. If there are any disruptions, a warning will be given, and a further warning may result in you being removed for the remainder of the meeting, and that would make us really sad. So, please, let's not do that. And thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome and making sure everyone here has the opportunity to be heard. Okay, it's now time for me to look at the sign-up list and see who we have. It looks like we have, give me a minute, I have to count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? People signed up to testify, which is interesting. I see way more than seven people in the audience. So, once again, if you'd like to testify, or if you feel so moved as other people are talking, you will be given an opportunity to come up if you change your mind. I will be calling names two at a time, so the first name should make their way to the microphone, and the second name should get ready to be next. You will have three minutes to speak, and I will be keeping track of time on my phone. You will hear a little chime when your time is up. It is not as annoying as it sounds. I tried to pick a really nice one. When giving testimony, we ask that you please first state your name, give us your zip code or the neighborhood that you live in. If you are testifying on behalf of an organization, please state that, and please identify which map you are testifying on. And finally, we ask that you please remember to go slowly for our interpreters. Okay, let's begin. Again, I'm going to call the first two names. So, the first person to testify is Jane Monson, followed by Ellen Manley.
My name is Jane Monson, and I'm only representing myself and my neighbor who has pooled time with me and has read my comments, so I am going to probably go about three and a half minutes. I won't take the whole time. I live in the East Moreland neighborhood, and I would like to speak tonight in favor of the Maple Map and against the Alder Map. Two of the criteria that the voters approved for the new districts is that they should not divide communities of common interest, and that they should be connected by transportation links. Unfortunately, the Alder Map ignores both of those criteria. This map carves East Moreland from the East Side and separates it from the adjacent Woodstock Commercial Center and other southeast commercial centers where we eat, shop, and play. The commissioners supporting the Alder Map insist that this choice is necessary to create equal populations in the proposed districts. But rather than removing East Moreland from its natural place on the East Side, I suggest that a better way to create equally-sized districts is to use the central East Side neighborhoods of Kearns, Buckman, and Hosford-Abernathy, as shown in the Maple Map. There are three reasons that better justify the Maple Map. First, the central East Side neighborhoods have five bridges connecting them to the West, as opposed to the one bridge that connects the Selwood and Moreland neighborhoods to the West Side. Even that bridge, the Selwood Bridge, is not considered to be a civic or neighborhood corridor by the city's 2035 comprehensive plan. Not surprisingly, as East Moreland residents, we rarely use the Selwood Bridge. Secondly, the Ross Island Bridge serves central East Side neighborhoods of Kearns, Buckman, and Hosford-Abernathy better than ours, because these neighborhoods are actually contiguous to the bridge, and our neighborhoods are not. We don't use the Ross Island Bridge to access the West Side of the river. When we infrequently travel westward, we primarily use the Burnside Bridge. Finally, the Kearns, Buckman, and Hosford-Abernathy neighborhoods are considered to be part of the central city in the city's 2035 comprehensive plan. Based on this fact and the transportation links I just described, the central East Side neighborhoods are the obvious and logical choice for inclusion with the West District. As I was thinking about how to find my community for the commission, our local newspaper, The Bee, arrived in the mail. This newspaper serves the neighborhoods of Selwood, East and West Moreland, Reed, Woodstock, Creston, Kennelworth, Brentwood-Darling, and Ardenwall in Southeast Portland. These are the neighborhoods we interact with and consider our community, not the ones on the West Side of the river. As I talked to my neighbors, I haven't found one yet that disagrees with me. Please approve the Maple Map. Thank you.
Perfect timing, very impressive. Thank you very much. The next person to speak is Ellen Manley, followed by Scott Ko.
Good evening. My name is Alon Manley, and I currently reside in the 9, no, 97216 zip code. Thank you. My employment is in the 97211 zip code. So, I've worked for SEI and have for the last 29 years. Providing a service to the African-American community has become more and more difficult because we are so far out. Getting our families here for events, or for business even, throughout the day and evenings, we host several programs in the evening. It's so hard for parents just to do the city transportation, to come from East County to 97211, the Center for Self-Enhancement. When I look at the district plan, it just reminds me, and I've been a part of Portland, Oregon for 60 years, it just reminds me of redlining, a new way to redline Portland or Oregon, Portland, Oregon, what have you. And it's concerning, because as others have spoken, my concern is the inclusion of African-Americans in this plan, and what does it mean for us, and what does it mean for the community at large? I currently live in a war zone. A day does not go by when someone is not shot or injured. My job requires, excuse me, requires me to be in the public. It used to be that I could pull over to the side of the road or into a parking lot and feel good about where I'm doing my work, not anymore, because of the crime. So, I would just like to say, I'm concerned about the inclusion of African-Americans, and I'd like for more talk about the inclusion, transportation situation with the MAX and regular TRIMET, as well as being able to provide services to families in East County, as well as North and Northeast. Thank you.
Thank you, Alon. Next is Scott Ko, followed by Jimmy Wilson.
Well, first off, thank you all commissioners for taking the time and effort to put this together. I'm sure you spent many hours and a lot of evenings putting this together and bringing this in front of all of us, so I appreciate your time on this. I'm Scott Ko. I graduated from Madison High, now McDaniel's High School in East Portland, and I've lived for the last 25 years over here in Overlook. And all three of these maps actually stay the same for my area, but I would like to speak to the Cedar Map in that I would like to see a high participation rate in our elections. And I think this is an exciting time for Portland to move to this form of government. I think it's a great change, well overdue. And I want to speak to the Cedar Map, because from my perspective, when you look at where the boundaries are, I think it'll be the easiest for voters to be able to identify where they, what district they live in. And I think the more they're able to identify what district they live in, they'll know which candidates they should be paying attention to. And to me, that's the key to the engagement, is, do I know who I should even be paying attention to in this election process? So, that's all I have to say about that. I really appreciate the previous speakers, so you've got a lot to think about. As long as I'm up here, and I think I have a couple more minutes, I really support the pay structure you have up here. I worked at a public entity, and I had a unpaid board, and that self-selects out a lot of people who cannot be on a board when you don't pay them appropriately. And I think recently, we had unfortunate Secretary of State incident. I was stunned to see how small the paycheck was, and I can see why there were issues around that, given how low the paycheck was. So, certainly support the pay structure that has come up here, and Cedar, just for the simplicity of it. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Next is Jimmy Wilson, followed by Melanie Billings-Yun.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have a couple of things. It's really, to make me feel comfortable, I have to know who y'all is. And it's very difficult for me to give you information when I can't get no information back from you right now. Black people are very uncomfortable with that, because where you taking my information? To help who? And when we see that we still on the waiting list, it seems like it goes old, deaf ears. You speak about the 14th Amendment? Don't pick out what best fits you. Pick out what it really means, equal opportunity for all, for all. Do all y'all on this board here live in Portland?
Yes.
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 I like that. Because how can you represent me if you don't know nothing about me? You feel me? Very so. And I'm... feel me? Very so. And I'm here to represent Maple, all of Elliot, all of the historical. I'm here to represent the people of black people, okay? People of color. When we say people of color, but I'm here representing black people. Can I be clear with that? No transparency, but I represent all, okay? We always get the short end of the stick. And I'm watching y'all. Because who voted for y'all to be sitting there? I didn't. You see, in the way, how is y'all getting, look around the room. How many people in this who like a cow that looks like me? How is y'all getting this information out? Take this stuff seriously, because you're going to make a decision in a short period of time. I think, if you want my solution, I think, what maybe I know, you need to get out of your seat. You need to get to the streets and get on your feet and go to us and tell us and teach us what you're doing. Because the way you get, and somebody going to get left behind. That's very sad. Some people, it's hard to get them to understand what y'all doing. Everybody ain't got a computer. Everybody ain't got ways to get this. Please, please, don't make a decision because you think you know it all, and you don't. Because somebody going to get left behind. Oh, I hope, I come here to talk from my heart. I hope I'm hitting your heart, not your mind, your heart. Because y'all is in some serious seats. And you're making decisions about the multitude, about livelihood, about people. Where do the community of color fit in that decision? This way? Well, if it's only this way, you got six left. It ain't going to work with everybody because I have to say, everybody ain't going to get it. And then they're going to come to me and say, where did that come from?
Thank you, Jimmy.
You got homework to do.
Melanie Billings-Yun, followed by Donna Cohen. Apologies, Melanie, if I mispronounced your last name.
Oh, everyone does.
I can't get the Yun.
My last name was meant to be mispronounced. Hello again. My name is Melanie Billings-Yun. I live in the Southwest Hills. I am a former member of the Portland Charter Commission. Yesterday, I came before you to testify on behalf of the Alder map. Today, I've come here to testify in thanks for you and on behalf of the work that you are doing, and on behalf of the work that our speakers have been doing and the people here, and on behalf of the audience who's taking time out of a glorious evening to come and be part of this experiment in democracy. The reason I am here today is because of the shocking news that we received yesterday, that there are indeed challenges to the very job that you are working on, to our proportional representation and to our districts. It is very obvious from listening to the folks here that being represented is extremely important to them, and yet we are hearing Commissioners Ryan and Gonzalez saying that they wish to gut the bill that the Portlanders passed last November by removing proportional representation and reducing the amount of commissioners that we would have. Marcus spoke about how our charter was designed to dilute the voice of people of color. Proportional representation was designed to give a voice to people of color, and that is being removed if the Gonzalez and Ryan bill measure goes forward. I want to give you one example, and that's from Lowell, Massachusetts. Until 2021, Lowell, Massachusetts was a nine-person, multi-member district, but they weren't voted, elected by proportional representation, just elected by plurality, which is what the Gonzalez and Ryan amendment wants to do. Forty-seven percent of the city was people of color, but only two white council members had been elected in the past 20 years. In 2021, they changed to a hybrid system with eight, three-at-large, and eight single-member districts. The three multi-member districts did not elect a single person of color. The reason being, they were all elected by single-voter representation, not by proportional representation. So I want to end by reading a quote that was signed by over 200 leading American political scientists and that was in the New York Times last year. "Our arcane, single-member districting process divides, polarizes, and isolates us, and produces a deeply divided political system," and I would say "social" system, "that is incapable of responding to changing demands and emerging challenges with necessary legitimacy. We call on Congress to adopt inclusive, multi-member districts with competitive and responsive proportional representation." This is the job that you are doing. This is the culmination of the work that we did on the Charter Commission and what the voters approved, and I thank all of you.[989.06][989.06][applause]
Thank you, Melanie. Donna Cohen, followed by Rich Burton.
Hi. Yes, thank you for your work. I just want, since it was mentioned, I too am outraged by the challenges. I believe there's a protest at City Council next Tuesday morning, if anybody is interested, 9:30. Anyhow, I did not plan to speak tonight, but I heard something that propelled me to speak. My, one of the things that I was very excited with, with these changes, is to give renters more of a voice in our government. I think that's truly crucial. Renters are something like 40, 45% of the city. I don't know if it's figures for Portland, but statewide, there are 300,000 renters that are living, that are severely housing cost burdened, meaning spending within 50% of their income on rent. This is a serious issue. It relates to other housing issues, and we need to really increase the influence of renters in our city. So what I heard, if I understood it correctly from one of the panel members at the beginning, was that at least one of these maps would align the well-to-do renters on the, on the west hills, or, you know, on the west side, with the well-to-do renters on the east side, and I think that was the Alder map. And I think that would be an incredible disservice. It would detract immediately from what we're trying to accomplish, which is to give, you know, renters who are not wealthy more of a say. So I would simply encourage you to not do anything to, to support, you know, creating a coalition of high-income renters to make it that much harder for our lower-income renters who are much more numerous and who really, finally, with our new system, are going to get a chance to have representation. So please do not do that. Thank you.[1129.14][1129.14][applause]
Thank you, Donna. Our final person on our list, anyway, is Rich Burton.
Hi there. Hi, my name is Rich Burton, and I am currently, pardon me, member-at-large number five for the Concordia Neighborhood Association. I'm from the 97211 area code. I've been in that area for the last 15 years. I'm currently the land use chair for the neighborhood association, and I would like to reflect some of the, some of the messages you've heard here. Our neighborhood is under a lot of pressure. I don't know which one of these are optimal, but our neighborhood is feeling other pressures as well outside. The ability to vote for things is really important in our neighborhood. We are underrepresented. The 97211 area code is the same, no matter which map you pick up here, but we're feeling a lot of pressure for land use. We're feeling a lot of pressure for leadership. We need, we need better representation. And when trying to pick representation, one of the things, as a neighborhood association person, who has been on neighborhood association before and now, and once again, since the pandemic, our neighborhoods have been really zapped of their cohesiveness with respect to the neighborhood associations. And I would like to see our neighborhood associations have a stronger voice and feed into this, to this district planning. And I would like to see more leadership in those neighborhood associations than that can then feed in to our, to our bigger political maps, if you will. But I, but I do echo some of the concerns that you've had, because this is a big change for us. We want to make sure that we do things that are equitable and that voices can be heard and that we don't create these power vacuums. But that's just all I wanted to say. I wasn't on the list, and I just wanted to say hello and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Rich. If you thought I was done trying to compel you to testify, you would be wrong. I am looking at an ocean of faces that we have not heard from, and surely some of you have heard new information tonight you'd like to provide feedback about. I see somebody who would like to come up and testify? Yes, please. Just a reminder to please provide us your name, zip code, or your neighborhood, and the map you'd like to talk about.
My map? My map. Let's try my name. Sigrid Casey. I currently live in the cusp of Woodlawn, Concordia, and Vernon.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I currently live on the cusp of three neighborhoods. I technically live in Woodlawn. I have lived in Portland since 1996. I have some opinions, but I'm not sure I've landed on an answer for which map. My comment is actually about how will the neighborhood associations, if they are split between that district and this district, and maybe a third one, bad luck, how will those neighborhood associations be able to vote effectively when their, half of their neighborhood is over here and the other half of their neighborhood is over here? So they've got six different people they're talking to. You know, I just don't understand how that's supposed to work. So part of me wants to say, well, could you preserve the neighborhoods? That would be nice. I've heard arguments here, which I think, hmm, well, maybe that's a better idea. I don't know. But I am concerned about how the traditional neighborhood associations have worked. I don't know how long they've been in, active in Portland, but I think longer than I have been. How that will integrate into the districts, because I don't want people to have to be fighting to try to get something done when they've got two different concerns going on. That's all.
Thank you very much.[1394.78][1394.78][applause] Yes, please.
My name's Terry Parker. I live in the Rose City Park neighborhood. I testified the other evening at Tabor Space, and I just want to continue with that a little bit. The only map that doesn't have Rose City Park, well, Cedar splits up Rose City Park, and I agree with the lady that spoke just before me about the neighborhoods. And I've attempted, hopefully I can work a little more with Amanda here, because we have talked, and I did email her. I've attempted to try to give you another idea for a map, and I just want to explain it tonight a little bit. It would move Rose City Park, Roseway, and Madison South into Area A, which is, I guess, the beige area up there. And then it would take Lloyd Center and Sullivan's Gulch, along with the east side industrial district, and move that into downtown. That, because there's, you've got to take something out of A in population to get it. And then East Moreland could be put back into the teal area there with southeast. That way, we're not a stepchild of southeast uplift. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared because I hadn't planned on testifying tonight. And I've kind of drawn out some ideas here that you can see, and I'm hoping that Amanda can help me put it on the regular map. I know she lives in the same neighborhood as I do, like right across the street from one of our former board members. I am on the board of my neighborhood association. So that's where I'm coming from. The commonalities, Rose City Park has commonalities with Hollywood. We're in different districts. I think that East Moreland probably has commonalities with the rest of southeast. And Lloyd Center and Sullivan's Gulch, I had to add a little bit more population. They have commonalities together, but they're kind of like downtown. So that's how I came up with the idea here. And the reason I included this, the east side industrial district, is to have a straight line along there so that it doesn't look like it's kind of meandering. So anyway, I thank you, and Amanda, I'd like to talk with you afterwards. I'll show you what I've got here, other than what I sent you email. Thank you.[1549.23][1549.23][applause]
Thank you, Terry. We just saw two great examples of people who were inspired to testify. I see another hand to the back. Please, make your way to the front.
It's your soothing voice.
Thank you very much.
My name is Chris Trevitt. I live in northwest Portland, so I live in a privileged area, as far as I'm concerned. And I also teach at Portland State. So I'm basically a west side person, but I'm more concerned about the east side. And I think that if we have to choose between these three, I would say probably the Maple map would be the best, because I think it addresses the redlining that was mentioned, I believe, redlining. This is something I discuss with my students quite a lot. If anybody's ever seen something called Adam Ruins Everything on YouTube, you should check out the redlining and the horrible, I think it's called the horrible situation with the suburbs, or something like that. But it basically addresses redlining with, in a humorous take. And I think that maybe, maybe we should consider that, in addressing that, maybe we should consider the idea that we shouldn't be so concerned about the west side's population representation, if only because of the income, the average income of westsiders. And especially since it includes, I believe, what would be below Barber Boulevard in southwest, if I'm not mistaken. But also, going into the, is that, does that include the Rose Quarter area and adjacent in the Maple on the west side?
None of that is.
Everything north of 84 is in the north northeast district.
Okay, okay. So all that is there. So I did, I did appreciate the idea that maybe Park Rose, Roseway should be in north, because I do believe that that would probably be a interests, good interest combination, to have them included. But I really do think that maybe we should consider the idea that income, average income should be considered in this as well, again, to address redlining and have the west, the entire west side maybe just be west of the river. That's my take on that. Thank you.[1712.52][1712.52][applause]
Thank you so much, Chris. Yes, fellow Portlander, please make your way down to the microphone.[1720.36][1720.36][laughter] Are you sure? All right.
Hi, I'm Joe Hertzberg. I live in the Sellwood neighborhood, and I was inspired. I hadn't planned to speak. I really want to thank you. You're taking a ton of your time and putting a ton of your energy and your, just good work into this. And it's not going to be appreciated. I can tell you that the Sellwood neighborhood feels like part of southeast Portland, and every one of the seven southeast neighborhoods that you are considering, that are sort of in that no man's land, considers themselves to be part of southeast Portland. And any of those neighborhoods that you put on the west side is going to feel aggrieved. Now, the numbers speak, and you've got to do one of these, but I'd really encourage you, if at all possible, to consider doing additional outreach to those neighborhoods. If you look at the eight places that you are having public hearings, none of them is in any of those seven neighborhoods. I understand why, but nonetheless, when all is said and done, people in those neighborhoods are going to feel that you have done them wrong. Now, I can speak speak only for the Selwood neighborhood. I use the Selwood Bridge all the time, and if somebody has to be connected with the west side, I can certainly see an argument for putting Selwood and Moreland in there. But McLaughlin is a real barrier. There's train tracks, there's a fast-moving road that goes by there, there's a heavy industrial area that's railroad-oriented, there's MAX lines, and including anybody that's east of McLaughlin in that west side district really doesn't make sense. So I, I guess if I had to speak to the maps, I would say probably the, the Maple makes the most sense to me, but I also have a self-interest in that, because that leaves me where I want to be. I think the tweaks that the gentleman spoke about earlier make sense to sort of include a little bit of northeast in that. I think that the Alder map really is going to be the worst. But more than anything else, I just want you to think very hard if there's anything that you can do to encourage those two, seven neighborhoods to get more involved in this process. As far as I know, we've gotten the same postcard as everybody else, and we're just as confused by that postcard as everybody else. And in the end, we'll say, how come you never asked us? And again, thank you. I certainly couldn't have done any better than you have.
Thank you, Joe. I am looking into the crowd of faces, scanning, before I make a final call, for our friends and fellow Portlanders to testify. If you don't know, I'm silently counting to seven in my head, because I was told you should do that. I need you to know for final call that once I close public testimony, I cannot open it again, although there may be time for questions. I've reached seven. So I am going to officially conclude a public testimony tonight, commissioners, if that's okay with you. Thank you so much to those that testified. It looks like we do have some time for questions that have been posed during testimony. Is the commission interested in answering some questions? I assume you are. We do it every time. Okay. All right. Let me go back up to the top and find the questions. Okay. We're going to go in order of the questions that we heard tonight. The first question is, and it's a, it's a big one. How are you weaving the high-level census data with the realities of who votes, disenfranchisement, and amount of voting renters? I think that was the question. Who would like to take this question, commissioners? At least to the best of your ability. Commissioner Chisholm.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big one. The thing to know, of course, is that the, the first and most important thing, obligation that we have, is to draw maps that are roughly equal in population. There's some room for, you know, flexibility there, but not a lot. Otherwise, you violate the one person, one vote rule. The second thing I would say, at least for me, and I think probably true for, for all of us, is we're not trying to make any kind of election outcome happen. You know, these maps are not about like, well, then if we do this map, then this kind of person will win, or that candidate will win. That's not something we're supposed to do and not something we're trying to do. It really has been, all of our conversations, we've had so many conversations in public and individually and private, have been about how do we drive representation? How do we really make sure that the people of Portland are represented, and particularly communities that have been underrepresented? You'll see all three maps have everything east of 205 in one district. And I can say that the strongest sort of consensus that we've had from the very beginning of this process was to recognize that East, East Portland has been so egregiously underrepresented for so long, for so many decades. Randy Leonard in 2002 was the first city commissioner east of 82nd. In this century, there was no one in the last century. And so that, that kind of representation, I think, is, is absolutely critical. I'm not sure I'm getting to the answer to the question, but I, I will say that it, this question of how do we make sure that people are represented has been a critical part of just about every conversation we've had in public and private.
Commissioner Judd.
Yeah, so just to attempt to address the question directly, there are data later, layers within the map tools that we have, and we can speak to that, those data sets, or we can defer to Stephen Green and his demography background to help us out with that. But we do, we have, we have looked at those layers. I don't want to say that we have an answer. I don't think any of us would say that we have an answer. And what we're trying to do with the maps is to figure out what, what does representation mean? What does enfranchisement mean? And then within that, what does equity mean? Right? And so it's an ongoing question that we're, we're struggling with to answer, using the data that we have available. And yet, even understanding that, looking at the data, as the gentleman above said, that's data. It's not the trauma associated with decisions that were made. And so hearing from you about the trauma, what that trauma means, is another qualitative point that we're looking to consider and fold into the decision-making. At the end of the day, the, the data will give us an indication of how to draw, but the meaning of the lines, the meaning of the relationships, that comes from the conversations that we're having with you.
Thank you. Commissioner Monhadas.
Can folks hear me okay? Okay, awesome. I wanted to speak to this point about weaving, because I think it's actually the right intention and the right verb to put on the table. And so I just wanted to appreciate that. It's not, there's no simple answer to that question. I don't think anybody has the right answer. But I do want to speak to what we're trying to do here, and what I think is really important. And I think part of it is representation and connection. And I, and about keeping communities together, not about drawing boundaries between communities based on our own experience and what we think should be done. And so I just want to elevate and appreciate Terry's work, for example, as an example, because what I've seen Terry try to do, and Terry and I are both in the Rose City neighborhood, is he's trying desperately to be connected to the Hollywood neighborhood. And part of that is because Rose City and Hollywood work together on community issues. So these are two different neighborhoods that collaborate often. And, and what I've seen in some of Terry's work is, okay, well, understanding the population changes that need to happen, well, maybe we'll put this area down with downtown. I think that brings up some of the tensions that elevates. It's a, it's like a pulley system. When we try to keep certain communities together, we run into the issues that other folks brought up around concentrations of power and making sure we aren't packing assets into one districts because we're trying to keep certain communities together and we're not breaking other communities. So there is a lot of give and take and tension. And I heard so many incredible observations, feedback today that will definitely be part of the next phase of this process. But also wanted to say that I think, you know, we, you know, I've participated in at least five of these hearings now, and want to appreciate the conversation around engagement and how we can't be comfortable and satisfied with engagement that is sitting behind the table and passively waiting for somebody to come to us. I think that's really important. And I appreciate the comment earlier of somebody saying, I don't know who you are. That's fair. Like, I don't engage with folks I don't trust, and I totally feel that. And part of it is understanding that people here were selected by the mayor, that for transparency, that was the process. The mayor made those selections. But everybody here has different connections to communities. So I think that's something that's not as visible, but that was part of the, the application process. So I did just want to elevate that. And say to, to close this, just to say that, to me, the most compelling testimony is coming back to what I think Terry is doing, is folks speaking from their own experience and saying, these are the communities I want to be connected to. This is how I want to be represented, versus, we should do this to that community so it doesn't affect me. To me, I find that less compelling, so I just want to put that on the table. Because I've heard that in every hearing, and I totally understand why that's coming up. I think it's just a reverse way of saying, I want to be connected to the east side, and I, as an eastsider, I totally understand. So just wanted to elevate some of those tensions. Just really appreciate the, the verb of weaving, because I think that's important. And appreciate all of you for coming out and for your comments today.
Thank you, Commissioner. And you answered one of the other questions, which is how does commissioners get selected for the IDC? So thank you very much. The next set of questions are really related to each other and around engagement, and so I'm going to kind of collect them and ask two at once, because I imagine the answer will be very similar. So how has the commission engaged with communities of color? And what intentional engagement methods have been used to overcome barriers to participate?
Well, I think that's, that's going to be a matter of each individual commissioner as, as they provide their responses. And I can tell you some of the things that, that I was engaged in. One, it was a continued effort of visiting communities that I hadn't visited before, like the gentleman said, hitting the streets, getting familiar with folks. And so I had the chance to visit black households in the east side, the far east side, who, like, was expressed as well, that they're living in affordable housing. They don't, they didn't feel connected necessarily to the community because they were forced to live out there. They had more of a connection with the north community. They were felt, for the most part, like as if they were on an island. Again, these are my summary notes of those conversations. In addition, speaking with community organizers and community leaders within the black community, attempting to understand what does engagement look like? What does it mean? What does mobilization look like? And the, the summary of that is that, let's say that the east side did a fabulous job, and this is, this is just a dynamic for communities of color in general. Let's say the summary, and, and, you know, I can't remember whether it was Marcus or Stephen that talked about the populations, the black and brown populations, and the numbers, the demographics there. On the high end, there's going to be, there may have, there may be a district that has a 12%, 12% people of color. That means, you know, 88% white. On the low end, there may be a community, a district out there, they might have, I think it's a 3% or 4%. Now, when, that means that if you take a, a district, like the one we have outlined on any one of the maps on the east side, let's say they do an incredible job of electing three district members who are accountable, responsible to the community members, and they are, you know, focused on all issues, including the equity issues out there, and they want resources. They still would need four additional council people to vote in their favor in order for that to happen. And so that means, as Marcus talked about, there's a need for a coalition, particularly when you're talking about communities of ethnic minorities. There will be a continued need for coalitions. So how do you build those coalitions? How do you build the coalitions where there are communities that have been traumatized, where they don't feel enfranchised, where, as Stephen pointed out, where the majority of the voting, so even if you, the phenomenon in east is that the voters there, as he pointed out, are 60-plus and white. And so how do you get, now that you have this, even a forest population of people of color living in the east, how do you engage them and mobilize them so that they actually participate in the civic duty of voting? And having them feel as if this is worth their time. And having, as the gentleman said, having them feel as if the people that are running, they can trust. It's a, and so that even if, when, when the lines are drawn, that's just the beginning, not the beginning, of another heavy lift that needs to take place in terms of galvanizing. And, and one of the things that Camille talked about so eloquently, in terms of like inadvertently creating modes of power. Many of you speak about homeowners, homeowners associations, community associations. The challenge still would be, if you will look at the diversity within those organizations, how diverse are they? Right? What does it mean that you are recreating these boundaries and they are leveraging and they're consolidating? What does that still mean for ethnic minority groups? They don't have that infrastructure. So, and this is where this, this tension between doing something that is equitable, creating space for equitable discussions, yet the risk of inadvertently creating consolidations of power when that wasn't the intent. So the short piece is that we have a lot of community engagement still to be done. I think, you know, there was a stress around visiting Selwood and the fact that there, that some of these communities that are significantly impacted have not been visited. We're very aware of that and understand that in the next couple of weeks, we still have a lot of work to do in order to reach out to those communities.
Commissioner, before another commissioner answers, I just want to mention that you also brought up the, another question that we have in the queue. So I kind of want to just put it out all on the table, and then commissioners can take it as you want. That, the last question that we were going to ask is, have you given thought to how these districts may be reinforcing harmful concentrations of power, particularly on the west side? So that, in conjunction with kind of reaching diverse communities, breaking down barriers, all of those questions are still on the table. Commissioner Lumley, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Can you, can you hear me? Okay. So the city staff have a, a list of contacts that they have for reaching out to a broad range of communities, including communities of color. We also have been meeting in a community engagement work group. Despite those efforts, we were not getting very much input from, in particular, communities of color at these kinds of events, although most of them were hybrid. They were all in the evening. And so during the months of April and May, I reached out to several leaders and organizations that represent the Latino, African, African-American, Asian, Native American. I might be missing one or two, but I had a lot of different meetings. And I brought all that information back to the independent district commission meetings. And we did get a few representatives that came to our meetings and did testify based on those interactions. So in, you know, I, I have a really careful approach when it comes to equity, and we can't just come here and announce a meeting and sit at a table and expect people to come to us. We have to go take that extra step. And we did that. And then also during my conversations with those leaders, I was asking for them to host a, a meeting. And I'm really pleased with the turnout here at this particular meeting because we have had more African-Americans testify here than any other meeting we've had so far. So getting SEI to host this event, I think, has been a real excellent outcome, and I'm, and I'm really pleased with that. We also did have conversations about asset packing, and maybe to put you on the spot, Commissioner Manoires, who is a little bit of an expert in that. I was particularly swayed by what happened, and there was a special session on that, and I couldn't make it to it, but I learned about it afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
I'm Commissioner Hanson. I'm just going to add a couple of additional thoughts on the, or short examples on the community engagement piece. First of all, I think with something like community engagement, there is always more to do, and it will never be enough. But to share a couple of additional examples of things, materials have been translated into a whole bunch of different languages. We have been pursuing media opportunities on, in non-English language outlets. So there have been a number of opportunities pursued that way. And then in addition to that, Commissioner Chisholm had mentioned, or alluded earlier to the fact that all of the neighborhoods east of 205 are in one district. That was the direct response of community feedback by engagement. One of our commissioners, who's not here this evening, Commissioner Kamura, is a big community leader in East Portland. And I know she met with a bunch of different groups there, and the overwhelming recommendation from them was to keep neighborhoods east of 205 together. And so, once again, making these collective choices, not from what we think of our own expertise, but rather what we have heard so far. And the last thing that I'll say is, one of the things that we are also thinking about, we've just gotten the feedback, I have this week, that we, while we have internally been tracking the different names of people, community leaders, organizations that we've all been meeting with, that has not yet been made public. And we have received, I was at a meeting yesterday, and we were And we have received, I was at a meeting yesterday, and we were asked to share that publicly as early as possible. Seeing some nods around the room. So, that is feedback that we have shared, to try to, with staff, to see if that's something that we can do. Because I know that we also, as a commission, are committed to even this process of community engagement, to have one of the questions be, who have we not yet heard from? And how can we intentionally reach out to get that feedback? So, I know a few of my fellow commissioners are meeting with the Selwood Neighborhood Association next week, for example. So, if you have additional ideas, please let us know. This is something that is deeply important to us, because it is really our, like, North Star with all of this, that the final map is as reflective as possible. One map cannot absolve all of us of all, of generational trauma and historical inequities, and it is our true sincere hope that it can be a step in the right direction. So, really, really appreciate those comments and uplifting those in this space.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Vance Ecker-Robins?
I just wanted to throw out a plug for Saturday. We're going to be at the Charles Jordan Community Center. So, if there's folks that now you're inspired to encourage to come join us on Saturday from noon to two, from noon to two, we would love to see you there. And Jimmy, I grew up across the street from Beach Grade School, and went to high school with Tony Hobson Sr. and Ray Leary, and have been a longtime SEI supporter and board member here. So, I care deeply about this neighborhood, and hopefully, we'll hear from a lot of folks, and it'll help us make good decisions going forward.
That is...
Do you have time for any more questions?
We absolutely do. We just concluded the questions that are on our list. If there's anyone here that would like to take a minute to come down and ask a question, we could take a couple. Did I hear someone interested?
Sorry, I'm back again. Haven't been doing this often enough in the 17 years that I've lived here, almost 17 years. But can we get some information about this Ryan Gonzalez thing? It's, as some other people have pointed out, it's an outrage. And obviously, we don't know a lot about it yet. I just read about it in the Portland Mercury, which I find is the most reliable reporting in Portland right now, especially when it comes to something like this. But is there any way that we, maybe you folks could help us with that, to understand what's going on with that? Because there hasn't been a lot of reporting about that.
Commissioner Fleishman?
Hi, good evening. I appreciate that question, and I will say, it's beyond the charge of our committee to engage in that. For those who are interested, you just cited one media outlet that is covering it, I believe, Oregon Live, Oregonian, has covered it also. I think it's important for us to do the work that we've been given to do, and to do it well, and to do it responsibly, and to respond to you all and your voices around the job that we've been given. And I think that we probably will not make any comments about those plans, because it's beyond the scope of the charge that we have. And we wanna protect the quality and the integrity of the work that we do.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you all so much for all the work that you've done. Really simple question about your outreach efforts. Was there intentional outreach done? I keep listening to this media voice, this radio announcer voice. And so, I just wondered, was there outreach done to perhaps advertise on stations such as The Numbers, or KBO, or some stations that perhaps would target people of color, African-Americans specifically, or the youth? And I know outreach is challenging. That's part of what I do for a living, but I do know that you have to go the extra mile. And so, just a question about what the outreach part looked like? And really appreciate what Ms. Trummer said, and part of what Mr. Green and Mr. Mundie said, so that, you know, that would help build trust in the community, if we could know what your specific efforts were like, as an entire commission, perhaps, and not just individuals.
Just to answer your, one small part of your question, I did an hour-long interview on KBO about two weeks ago. You can still find it online. It was part of the, I think it was the PDX Progressive Radio Show, hosted by Moses Ross. So, yeah, that was a lovely experience. The hour went by very quickly. Basically, walked through the differences of all the three maps, and talked about a lot of our, of our, of our, structure of our effort.
Mr. Radio Voice?
Yeah, that's gonna be, I'm gonna make a T-shirt with that on it. What was your name again?
Jonna Davis.
Jonna, thank you for the question. And I wanna say that what you've heard tonight from the commissioners are idiosyncratic responses to a need. I think what happens, and she came back in perfect timing, is that experts and consultants like Camille need to be leveraged more, in order for Portland to change some historical patterns of how it engages with communities of color. If, as Marcus pointed out, there's a history of lack of diversity at the council level, at the mayoral level, it is because there are some systemic institutional issues and challenges that the city of Portland needs to honestly and openly confront, in terms of how it deals with and reaches out to ethnic minority communities. I think there is a, there's a tendency to use organizations and conversations with organizations as proxies, as opposed to what Mr. Jimmy said, which is hitting the streets. Right? Knocking on doors, getting feedback, and having established ways in which listening posts within the ethnic minority communities are established, leverage are formed in terms of coalitions, so that they can have a voice. Here's the thing, in that gray matter, in that gray space, there's a tendency to create a monolithic perspective, even of the black community and ethnic minority communities. Well, this is what they think, this is what they said, and as Stephen pointed out, oftentimes, it may not be coming from someone who looks like them, whereas, as Mr. Jimmy pointed out, it's from the same streets as them. Right? This is a problem. Right? We have to be honest about that, and recognize that a change is required, in order to do this effectively. It might be one of the reasons why Portland is one of the whitest cities, despite what, you know, I agree with Stephen that it's changing, but it's still one of the whitest cities in the US. Right? And there's some structural reasons because of that. One of it might be that we need to do a better job of understanding those ethnic minority community members, who've been here for such a long time, have trauma responses that they're working through, that we need to be able to understand, not just how to get to a certain post and speak at them, but create spaces where we're invited in, and we can listen to them. We have, we have a lot of work to do.
Did you all have a booth at Good in the Hood or Juneteenth?
No.
Just asking.
Yep.
Would them volunteer for the hood?
Sorry.
The question whether they had a booth at Good in the Hood or Juneteenth?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other questions? I think we could take one more before we have final remarks. Oh. Camille? Would you please go to the microphone, so we're recording? Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. Camille Trummer, she/her, social impact consultant. Two questions, or actually, one question and one suggestion. Has there been any honoraria to reduce barriers to participation? As in, participation incentives, gift cards, full meals for evening events, childcare, so that more folks have access and opportunity to participate during the engagement process?
The short answer is no.
And so, therein lies a huge barrier.
Well, I wonder also, with the organizations...
If you speak into the microphone, thank you.
Definitely not from the commission, and there wasn't, that wasn't part of the commission outreach. But I do wanna say that, I know that there are organizations that engage in that as a practice, and there's been a lot of partnership with organizations who engage that as a practice. But I do think as like, a resourced body by the city, it is important also to make sure that we're resourcing that for those organizations, so they don't have to use their own resources. So, we'll just say that there has been partnership with organizations who practice that, but it has not been from the commission.
Okay, that's helpful. So, then my suggestion is, as a standard, basic practice, a praxis of engagement, inclusive engagement, is to always reduce barriers. So, whether those are linguistic barriers, whether those are barriers like food instability, and you match that with providing meals, participation incentives. If you want people to complete surveys, pay them for their time, pay them for their expertise. These are standard practices. So, I just wanna offer that as a suggestion, and if you need any other support, please reach out to me, because this engagement process has to be far more inclusive for the rest of the period that it is open. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lumley?
I think that's an excellent recommendation, one that we'll bring back to the city. I know we didn't have the budget for it, that's for certain. I used to work for the Native American Youth and Family Center, and we do a lot of that kind of activity, to get good quality input from the community. We are also on an extremely tight timeline, and I'm not quite sure how much more we could have done with the budget and the timeline that we had. But we certainly are trying to do the best job we can, and I really wish we could have taken your recommendation early on and found the funding for it, but I don't think the city would have given it to us. It just wasn't in the budget.
I believe, Mr. Green, we have time for one last question, if you wanna close us out.
So, I mean, speaking as a former city employee, I think you're seeing the dynamic between outreach and relationships, right? Like, when we reach out to our grandmother, we don't outreach to her, we have a relationship with them. And so, you know, outreach is something you do to someone, a relationship is something you do with someone, and so, there's natural barriers that exist, when there's that relational empower dynamic that we're seeing play out here. Question, in going through past meetings, I know, and there was one map that had St. John's in it. As someone who's lived close and worked directly in St. John's for a long time, I'd love to know what kind of conversations happened, that side of the cut, as they would say, because they're not North Portland, they're St. John's, as I've always been reminded. So, I'd love to hear, you know, what worked there, how you got information from them, and how you're gonna leverage that in conversations with Selwood and other spots. Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to take that question?
Commissioner Hanson? I'll take a stab at it. So, there were a couple of key themes, and then I'll be curious for other folks to add, from what I can recall of those connections, of pulling the St. John's neighborhood over to the west side. One was the sheer distance, and the fact that Forest Park is very, very sparsely populated. So, the distant, one of the criteria that we have is compactness. And, and so, having the district kind of go so far north, that there wasn't as much of a sense of connectivity with the St. John's, the bridge in St. John's being the one connection to the west side, as opposed to any of the communities further south on the east side, just having more connective tissue. Another piece of feedback that I remember hearing in, from a community listening session that we held, was folks in North Portland wanting like, all of the northern band of the city in one district, due to the shared common interests around the port, and the airport, and the river. And so, if St. John's were with the west side, that would have North Portland be in three districts, instead of in two, that it currently is. And then, I believe there were other conversations with various community leaders at neighborhood associations, or community leaders amongst communities of color in some of those areas, who also said, like, we want this area to be kind of together with the rest of North Portland, and feel like we are more of a community of common interest with, with other parts of North and northeast Portland, than with the west side. Who has, what did I miss? Oh, oh, it's a high school district? Yeah, okay, go ahead. This is something I learned.
Well, I was also gonna say that one of the, there's a lot of different overlays, probably 40 different kinds of data overlays that we've been laying on maps, but one of them is looking at high school enrollment areas. And the, St. John's and the Roosevelt enrollment area runs west, and west to east. And across the river, Linton is the closest, like, community to St. John's. On the, on the west side of the river, they go to Skyline Elementary and Lincoln High School. And so, we've been trying to, we've heard from a lot of parents, that they are interested in how high school enrollment areas overlay on the districts that they're, that we're looking at. The other thing about St. John's, and they're gonna be at the meeting on Saturday, but they have, they have one bus line that crosses the river on, over the St. John's Bridge, and goes up Highway 30. Otherwise, to get from that end of North Portland, you have to go all the way west to the Rose Quarter on bus lines, or to get onto Max. So, it's a very disconnect, it's, it's, if, P-Bot has a equity map for transportation, and it's very, it's a very disconnected part of the city.
And just to make that explicit, that one of the key criteria is that districts must be connected by transportation links. So, yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Manhais?
Thank you, sorry. I knew that was gonna happen. Thank you for the question. I think part of it is revisiting the fact that these are draft maps for folks to respond to, and I know that the drafts that are up here were part of folks in the commission responding to what they were hearing from different communities. That said, there wasn't a lot of voice from the southeast neighborhoods during those early engagement periods, and so, I think that's reflected here. You can go back to the website, and I think see past meetings that are linked on there as well. So, you can sort of get a feel for the conversation that was happening, understanding that there isn't unanimous support, even on the commission, for each of these maps. And so, I think part of it, or this feedback process, is to continue to share information and data back with the commission about what we would like to see. So, I don't think a West, a St. John's west side map is off the table. This is just three maps to respond to. And so, that's more data for us to take into account, because I think folks in the southeast neighborhoods have had similar questions to say, why wouldn't we pull west side population for a northeast district, for example? So, I just, you know, there's different ways to look at this, but I do think what's up here is a reflection on who was engaging in those early stages of the process.
Okay, oh.
Just going back to your question, I think, your question was an extension of your point that outreach is different from having relationship. And then, you segued into specifically, what was the involvement of the St. John's community? And how do we gather their feedback? I think one of the things that Sharon just mentioned is that we do need, we owe a trip up to St. John's to listen, and gain that feedback. So, we're working on that for, in the next two weeks or so, to be able to do that, to get that feedback. And to add to the public comment that we've heard thus far, but really, again, as Jimmy emphasized, hit the street, and feel for each, as a collective, as much as we possibly can, get the many, as many commissioners as we possibly can, in that environment, so that we can bring that back collectively, that group back to the collective, and have a broader discussion. There is this very clear discussion around, what does it mean, again, for representation of these communities, if you have to jump the river and pull, and annex some part of the east into the west? What does it really mean about representation? So, it's necessary, if, if we're saying that we, that we did that, and we heard that from St. John's, but we didn't from Selwood, that's problematic. If we haven't been on the ground and done adequate effort, and any of these... from, from St. John's, but we didn't from Selwood, that's problematic. If we haven't been on the ground and done adequate effort in any of these environments, we owe it, we heard that feedback and we owe it the attention of the entire commission to be able to be responsive to that request.
Okay, commissioners, it's that time on the agenda to wrap things up. This is when you offer your profound and poignant words of encouragement and kudos to the participants. Commissioner Judd?
Yeah, I just want to, again, say thanks to SEI and Tamara and her staff, like, and making this a very welcoming environment, the time that her staff took to put into this, really do appreciate it. And I love the fact that it reminded me of a big home where you cannot wear a baseball cap. You got to weigh with something, man. Don't let these ladies see you with that cap, boy. There's a clear sign out there, respect the culture. You shouldn't be able to do that. So thank you very much, Tamara, really do appreciate it. Thank you.
And I will put in a quick plug. I know we heard from a lot of folks in the room, but not everyone. And so we have some, I'll direct your attention to these giant post-its on the wall over on the side, where if you were not able to share testimony at the mic or something else came up for you, we've got some prompts that are looking at the maps. What do I like? What do I wish were different? And what if XYZ? Like what, what additional idea do I have? And we also have a fourth page up there where if you have a preference for one of the three maps or none of the above, if it were up to you today, which one would you support? So you're welcome to use a sticky and indicate that. Yet another way of, for us to be able to solicit feedback, especially from folks who didn't speak up at the mic. And just after that, echoing gratitude for all of you and your really thoughtful comments tonight. We got a lot to think about and a lot more work to do.
One of the group that we should definitely think as well, Flow Analytics has been our Brian, Brian, brain trust for us, to help us walk through all the data, understanding the metadata, the relationships between the, the maps. And so give me, and the Flow Analyst team, again, thank you very much. And she's taking time around here to do this as well.
I also have some final thanks to give before adjourning this meeting. Thank you to our interpreters. Thank you to our technical partners, Friends of Noise, to the staff who helped put this hearing together. And of course, to SEI for welcoming us into this beautiful space. We really appreciate it. And of course, all of you for coming out and spending your evening with us and providing us your feedback. We really appreciate it. This meeting is officially adjourned, so please enjoy your evening.